Good morning. Welcome to the October 20th NHD Subcommittee Meeting. Thank you all for joining us here today. Councilwoman DeCesu is unable to join us, so we will have a crew of three today for a very exciting agenda. And we will start that agenda with a review of the minutes.
I've reviewed the minute. I've reviewed the minutes and I'm gonna make the motion to accept.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We have a consent agenda with items three through seven. We have two cards in support of item number five on historic preservation bond funding. You had a chance to review the consent agenda, and if so, could we have a motion?
I so move items three through seven, supporting in favor of...
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Lot of exciting items with energy audits, rejoining the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment, significant investments in historic preservation. And now we will move to our Plan Phoenix update. Councilman...
Chairwoman Gallego, members of the Subcommittee. If I may, before we start the presentations, I'm sure you're wondering why there's cookies at the table. On behalf of the City Manager's Office and staff, we did want to extend a happy birthday to our chairperson, Gallego, today.
Wonderful.
We are celebrating her birthday.
Big sing happy birthday. I think Councilwoman Valenzuela should lead the song.
Well, now that you mention it, I guess we're gonna have to. Yeah, let's do it.
All right, ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Councilwoman Gallego. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
Well, thank you very much. Very kind. It's a good thing the voters chose people who could sing well.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. We are here to talk about the general plan, next steps. As you're all aware, the voters of Phoenix approved the general plan with about a 76% approval rating in August, and so we're very excited to start working on the next steps of the general plan. Continuing on, we have Sandy Hoffman, who's the Deputy Director over the Planning Division, and Josh Bednarek, who's our Project Manager for the general plan. He's gonna walk us through our next series of public outreach and what we're doing, starting this fall and all the way through into next year. With that, Josh, take it away.
Thank you, Alan. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thank you for having us here. Thank you for your ongoing support for the general plan. And first and foremost, happy National Community Planning Month. If you weren't aware, October is National Community Planning Month, so it's very fitting that we're here today to talk about the next steps for the general plan. So the next phases for the general plan basically fall into three parts. And as we walked you through in the CCR, the presentation's gonna explain how each of those three parts comes together. The first part is these village character plans. And one of the concepts that we talked about during the general plan update was trying to get the villages back to the concept of planning. And we really feel like these village character plans provide that opportunity to each of our village planning committees. What you have before you on the screen is a template or a booklet that we've put together that each of the village planning committees will complete. Joel Karosko and our team is the Desert View Village Planner. He's also had the opportunity, utilizing some of his skills, to put this actual booklet together. We think it's come together really well. We think it's gonna be a really fun process for each of the village planning committees to work on, articulating everything from their vision to their goals, their assets and their challenges, to be able to talk about how this larger general plan relates specifically to their village. These are just snapshots from the booklet as it's coming together, as it will come together for Desert View. One of the last things it does is it provides each village planning committee an opportunity to work with their planner to outline some goals that they want to achieve, and then connect those goals back to the larger core values in the general plan, and then talk about how they want to use the seven strategic tools in the general plan to develop a work program and how they want to achieve those goals. That could be a series of presentations, maybe some tours, or potentially a planning project or two. Phase two really involves a mapping exercise, and it's, I think, what everybody had really been anxious to do. Alan, myself, or Sandy would go out to talk about the general plan, is really go out and roll up your sleeves, grab some markers, and start marking some things down on a map. The maps that are up on the screen are two maps that we've used, a methodology that we're gonna use for this next phase. We're basically gonna break up each village into three parts. An area of growth, an area that we want to see some change in scale or intensity; an area of retrofit, where we might not want to see too much change in scale or intensity, but something different can go there; and then an area of preservation, where those areas that, from a scale and intensity standpoint, really are good. We want to couple that exercise with thinking about where are those areas of growth lining up with our planned and existing infrastructure investments. And so the timing of the process of Prop 104 is very appropriate, thinking about where are those transit lines now going, and where those areas of growth lining up, and is there some intersection? Samantha Keating and Carl Gordon on our team have been doing an outstanding job, working with all of the departments and getting their data and displaying it here on these maps, and then on a chart that I'll show you here in a couple of slides. So each of the maps and infrastructure areas line up with the core values in the general plan. So these here before you are connectivity, transit streets, jobs, arts and culture. We've got water and sewer, and then parks, police, fire, some other areas on the last map. So the last phase is these place types or centers. And it's really an opportunity to build on a lot of the great work that we did in Reinvent Phoenix, and trying to think about, now that we've identified those areas of growth and thought about what infrastructure's there, what does that growth potentially look like? And the place types provide the framework to have that discussion. So what we'll essentially be doing is deploying those across the city in appropriate locations. I've been saying, this is maybe the coolest chart in the history of charts that the planning department has ever put together, and as a planner, I'm very excited about it. So with that, this really is the playbook, or the legend, if you will, for those mapping exercises. And the way it essentially works is where you have more dots and lines, the bigger the place type center can go. And so we're working on kind of cleaning up that activity this fall internally here, and then we'll be engaging the villages with that exercise later next year. This is a snapshot of those three phases of the plan. Again, using Desert View as an example, these aren't real maps just yet. You have the character plan in phase one, the mapping exercise in phase two, breaking the village down into those three parts, and then phase three, using the infrastructure analysis to assign the place types. As Alan mentioned, we're taking a phased approach to implementing these next steps. The northern villages are going first, and some of them have started this fall. The western and southern villages will start later this year, and then the central villages will start in 2016. We're hoping to wrap everything up by the end of 2016, so this work program takes us all the way through 2016. In addition to all that, we want to make sure that we're keeping this process going of engaging with the villages. Again, we think that the character plan provide a great opportunity to do that. We'll also be partnering with the Neighborhood Services Department to offer some classes in the Neighborhood College about planning. Thanks to the Arizona Community Foundation, their donation, we'll be working on trying to come up with some interactive presentations and videos, again, to help expand the capacity of the community about urban planning, and then continuing to use our social media tools to get the word out about the project. Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. I think Councilwoman Pastore spent a lot of time this summer making sure the general plan passed, so thank you to her for her leadership.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Do we get new signs?
For the villages?
Yes. Modernize them, or not modernize them, just replace the ones that we currently have that are, need some love and care.
Sure.
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, that is something that we currently don't have any budget money for in the department's budget. We can certainly talk with the City Manager's Office and try and see if as part of the next budget, we can work on getting some money to do that.
Or maybe we could figure out a way with our villages to see what the cost is, and then collectively, maybe come together and figure out how we can possibly raise some money within our neighborhoods to replace them. Trying to think innovative.
Be creative, yes.
But thank you.
We can certainly look at that, and we can get some cost estimates, because the street transportation department makes the signs for us as part of their sign shop, so we can figure out what those costs would be.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And thank you for the emphasis on aligning growth with infrastructure. I think that really is key. We've definitely heard from the voters, they want more investments in infrastructure, and that in part because of the economic growth associated. So it's wonderful that we are planning across departments, and something that we need to continue. And our good planning has been well-recognized lately. It was exciting to mark our planning month with the recognition of Roosevelt Row as one of the greatest places in the United States, and so thank you to everyone involved with that effort. It was important recognition for your department's efforts and our community's efforts.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. I'd also note that later this month, the department is gonna collect a award for the Reinvent Phoenix project from the Arizona Planning Association as well. So that's recognition for the work that we have done along that project as well.
Fabulous. And then, as we move forward, I think it's great that we're gonna continue to engage folks online. We had a very robust process leading up to the vote and got connected with a wide variety of individuals, and I know they want to stay engaged, but not all of them can attend meetings, and we had so many creative meetings at barber shops and on the light rail and other locations. So I heard good feedback from that, and that we still want to engage a broad representation of our community, because we cannot put everyone on a village planning committee, but that does not mean they are not passionate about their communities and the plans for it. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you, congratulations. I think ultimately, I think the litmus test is at the polls, and I don't remember any proposition or candidate, those who didn't run and oppose anyway, that had a greater victory margin than this. So that speaks to the good job that you've all done collectively to bring our community to this process, taking this process to the community, as Councilwoman Gallego just mentioned, barber shops and, you know, community centers and just everywhere. So congratulations and thank you. Onto the next step. How much, I just, I have a question, and I'm just trying to think of how we can improve even on this, and you're probably already doing this, Josh, but how much effort is actually being taken to the schools? For example, our high schools, you know, Phoenix Union High School District and several others. I know that there was a planning event that, my Plan Phoenix event that we did at Washington Park in District Five with a bunch of students. You know, that's probably a place that you could probably look at if you're not already doing that. We're talking about a 10-year plan. Those students that we're finding in our high schools, I mean, it's gonna be, it's their city now, but, you know, I mean, we're talking about a time where they are moving on to another level of their lives. Many of them will be married, children, and so on, so it's important to engage our youth.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Valenzuela, absolutely. To your point, we made a lot of great partnerships during the first phase of the project with schools. We're really hoping that the little videos that we're coming up with, and then the activities themselves, the mapping, are something that lends themselves to more interactive activities, and certainly would be a great exercise to do at a high school. Coloring on maps and putting stickers is something everyone enjoys doing.
Mm-hmm. That's great.
And we also got a lot of feedback through the process that was not directly planning-related, but people saying where bus routes needed to be and others. And can you sort of update us on the efforts to share that information with other departments?
Certainly. Madam Chair, I'll give you a direct example. You know, Megan Neal, who's working in the Transit Department, we regularly supplied that data to her, the feedback that was provided to us, and they used that as part of Prop 104. You know, I'm working with Mark Melanchenko in streets, talking about where were those places that we talked about wanting complete streets that weren't necessarily related to the general plan, but there was really specific data. Part of what we've also done is created these sheets that we'll take a look at with each of the village planning committees, because much of the feedback we got was really village-specific, and we didn't want to lose that. And so we'll be resurrecting a lot of that data and evaluating that as part of the village planning character process. I'm sure as we dive into that, we'll get more kind of other department-specific feedback that we'll continue to pass along. Again, as part of this process, we have a great working relationship with all the departments, and we'll continue to keep that going.
Wonderful. Thank you. I know it's one of our city manager's priorities to break down silos between departments, so thank you for helping us lead the way.
I would just add, Madam Chair, that Josh has a working group that we've kept in place with the other department representatives. So as part of developing it, there was a working group representative for each of the departments, and we continue on with them to get that information embedded in those departments, because that's our best chance of implementing these. It has to go in those departments. And so it is, just as you mentioned, in line with the city manager's priorities, but it's also, you know, as built into part of our process, and we continue to do that as we go forward.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, thank you for this update. We're looking forward to seeing what the villages come up with and the community.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to an update on our blight liens and foreclosure pilot program, which is an exciting effort that really came from demand in the community and very much shows that I think we're taking seriously community needs, including in our redevelopment areas.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. We are here to provide an update to the recommendations that came from the ad hoc committee that you co-chaired, and as a desire of the community, as well as what you've seen going on, and how we could better deal with the vacant properties out there in the city of Phoenix. I'm Chris Hallett, the Neighborhood Services Director. I have with me Patrick Ravenstein. He's the co-compliance manager that oversees our abatement lien programs. So we are here to give you an update on the recommendations that came out of the ad hoc committee and were approved by council in January of 2015. So providing updates on how we are utilizing polycarbonate material and reducing the boardup timeframe. As you recall, we had plywood was required on all openings up to six months' time. Now, the requirement is polycarbonate be used if it's gonna be boarded up more than 90 days. So we'll give an update on that. You also wanted better communications on properties that the city was abating through notification, and we've done some posting of those sites. You also asked for the creation and initiation of an abatement lien program, which we have very exciting news on that pilot program. And this also resulted in an ordinance changing the new heating and cooling temperature standards for the city of Phoenix. So first off, as you can see, the polycarbonate, it makes a big difference. A boarded-up property can be tagged, as seen in this picture, but otherwise is an invitation to crime and other things that can happen, whereas polycarbonate has, for all practical purposes, a window appearance. Additionally, it provides some health and safety issues. If somebody does get in through the back, you, police can see them through the front. This requirement is for all openings that are visible from the street. Since implementation, there's been 241 boardups the city has conducted, 148 of them met the requirement with openings visible from the street. 94 of those were initial abatements that we did with polycarbonate, but 48 of 54 of them were also done as they exceeded the 90-day timeframe. So we replaced the wood with polycarbonate. And in addition to that, 12 property owners did polycarbonate on their own abatements of their own properties. Since implementing the posting of abatement notifications, there's been 940 properties that have been posted. The notification itself tells the community what's going on on the property, provides contact information. We received about 10% calls inquiring if the cities actually owned the property as a result of a little bird being there, but we've been able to notify them that this is only up during, before and during the abatement process and is promptly removed afterwards. So hopefully, it just provides that information to the community. The heart of the recommendations was the creation of the abatement lien program. If you recall, there's 2,850 properties that have one or more abatement liens on their property. And this is a dated picture. We'll get to the new number. But as a result of researching about 1,250 of those with its existing staff, we've been able to refer 43 properties, which are the highest risk for either tax foreclosure or had multiple liens on them. Those total 274,000 in liens. Those referrals alone and the notification process that goes through that has yielded $38,000 in collections to avoid the foreclosure process. Additionally, 143,000 of those property liens are subject to a tax foreclosure. As you know, our lien is priority over all liens except for tax foreclosure. So hopefully, being able to take these through our own foreclosure process will preempt losing 143,000 of our liens. Additionally, 640 letters have gone out to properties with delinquent liens on them, and those have yielded, that was dated early September. As of yesterday, we've collected $349,000 in a delinquent lien, so...
Busy October and September.
Very busy. We're getting a lot, and big kudos to Patrick and his team. We have members of the team here that are working feverishly. As we get more and more success, it takes more and more work to keep doing this. So we've got more coming in every day. There's letters still going out, still to be paid on, but it's been great innovative ways, so it's not just the tax foreclosure. So we do have 43 referred. We have three scheduled the next two weeks for hearing, and then within 30 days after that, we hopefully have our first successful foreclosures. So we'd like to be able to come back in, say, January, once we get a litany of these through foreclosure, and even more monies through our other collection efforts to give you updates. But thanks to Patrick and his team, our total collections to date have been $392,000 through these efforts. The last recommendation was the change in the ordinance, creating standards for heating and cooling. As you recall, the new requirements, which apply to basically multifamily, require heating up to 70 degrees, or if it has air conditioning, it must be able to cool to 82 degrees, and an EVAP cooler must be able to cool to 86 degrees. We've had 29 cases come in since we've implemented the new ordinance. 20 of those have been resolved through 12 notice violations and one citation. The rest have come into compliance on their own, and we have nine current cases open. This is gonna be more and more important every year as these aged housing stock gets older and older, and the infrastructure that supports them, and the most vulnerable becomes more at risk. So it's a great tool to have in our toolbox as we go out to make residents' life in Phoenix much better. So staff continues to develop innovative ideas. They've been creative on how we reach out to collect on these liens, on how we do our foreclosure process to expedite it and have a better improvement on blight and crime. We work with the departments. We're trying to get the message out that we have property with liens on them. We've had referrals from other departments that may be problem properties for them, and if we have a lien on it, we run it through our process and we can start referring it to foreclosure. The idea is to collect on these liens, get these properties rehabbed and reoccupied, paying taxes, and otherwise participating in the community. That's our update.
Wonderful. Thank you. And it's timely that we're having this after one of our major gain celebrations in the city of Phoenix. Was able to talk to a police officer in the South Mountain Precinct who gave really positive feedback about the boardup standards, how the old standards were sort of advertisements for property crime, and now the houses are a little bit safer and the neighbors are thankful. They'll be even more thankful when they're occupied again, but really positive feedback on the safety implications. And I think we've also gotten a lot of positive feedback about taking care of residents in the summer where high temperatures can get dangerous. So thank you for your work. We know your staff has been much, much busier, and we appreciate that hard work. I think it will pay off for the community. Any questions from my colleagues?
No, just, I agree. Thank you so much. These are differences that really make a difference for people. Arizona summer heat can be deadly. In fact, it's proven to be deadly every year, and frankly, I don't think people realize how cold it can get in Phoenix in the winter, so... And I know we have an item coming up next where we can talk a little bit more about that as well. But this is a big deal for us, and, you know, Councilwoman Gallego, you deserve a lot of credit. You're leading the effort here, chairing this Subcommittee. So Chris and Patrick and your entire team, thank you.
Thank you. But I'll ask a question later regarding apartment complexes that are abandoned, and how do we reach those owners and make sure that they're at the standards that they should be as they go through either auctioning off, selling them, however, whatever the issue is, but to maintain them? So they're vacant, abandoned apartment complexes.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman, we'll follow up with you for that specific question.
Okay, thank you. But thank you for all your work, because I do think this, we can see it now in September and October, and so that means more work. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you both for that report. Much appreciated. And now we will move to an update from the Funders Collaborative, working to fight homelessness.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thank you so much. Mo Gallegos, Human Services Director for the city of Phoenix, and we appreciate the time on the agenda today to give you an update on the Funders Collaborative to end homelessness. As you may remember, four organizations came together about a year ago to address the urgent need at that time to close the Men's Overflow Shelter facility across from the Human Services Campus. And I'm really glad to have the partners that I work with each and every week here at the table with me. To my immediate right, Bruce Liggett, the Director of the Human Services Department in Maricopa County. We have Michael Trailer, the Director of the Arizona Department of Housing; Brian Spicker, Vice President of Community Impact, I'm sorry, at the United Way; and Jeff Alexander, the Commander of Central City Precinct. As I mentioned, we came together to address what at first glance appeared to be a finite problem, a building which was no longer inhabitable, but as often occurs, we found that we were working with a symptom and not really a cause, and so we've continued to work diligently on all different aspects of this issue. We did phase out the Men's Overflow Shelter, as well as the adjacent parking lot, both of which were unsafe and not conducive to ending homelessness. At the same time, we opened up, without any delay, alternative shelter, under roof, on the Human Services Campus. We thank the Loadstar Day Resource Center, St. Vincent de Paul, and many other partners that work on this every single night. The current average of the individuals that are staying there on any given night currently is about 400. You also may recall that when we started this process last October, we combined and reallocated our resources to pilot a Housing First methodology to move folks staying in the Men's Overflow Shelter and the adjacent parking lot into permanent housing through a rapid rehousing contract. 55 individuals were successfully housed through that pilot. We're really proud to say that 93% of them are still housed today after a year. The project demonstrated to all of us the success of Housing First approach with this long-term, very service-resistant population, and really helped us start to look at what are the next steps that we could take. When we transitioned away from the overflow building and the parking lot, thanks to the generosity of values of Sun United Way, they were able to fund the expansion of our coordinated assessment so that we could begin to understand the population and make housing strategy decisions based upon data. That led us to look for resources, and the last time that we were here, we were really excited to report that we had received a million dollars each from the Maricopa and the Phoenix Industrial Development Authorities. That coupled with half a million dollars, $500,000, from the Valley of Sun United Way philanthropy, we were able to put to rapid rehousing. At that time, we were in the process of competitive procurement, which has resulted in contracts with three community-based organizations. I'll give you a few numbers in here in just a moment. Similarly, we partnered with three organizations to provide permanent supportive housing, utilizing the Housing Choice vouchers that you, council, and mayor prioritized for chronically homeless individuals back in February. You made it very clear, we had to have services around those individuals, and we have them. We were able to leverage these vouchers to provide comprehensive permanent supportive housing service through innovative partnership with Mercy Maricopa Integrated Care. They are the regional behavioral health authority, coupled with Valley of Sun United Way funds, and we work through two of their partners for Mercy Maricopa. Since that time, we have also had the opportunity to apply for Arizona Community Action Association Home Energy Assistance Funds. And so we made application. We have received $105,000 through that fund to put towards utility deposits. So all of these projects I've described, they have these utility assistance dollars that the city of Phoenix and Maricopa County caseworkers help administer as people get housed. So here are the numbers where we are to date. RRH Rapid Rehousing, we have housed 39 individuals, 34 approved, and what that means is they are actually literally looking for a place as we speak. They are all through the process. They just have to find the place, sign the lease, and get moved in. 138 more are in the process of getting towards approval, and then, of course, ultimately being housed. On PSH, the Permanent Supportive Housing, we have been able to house 23 individuals. 42 are approved and looking for places. 84 more are already engaged in that whole process. So in conjunction with the 55 I mentioned earlier, we've housed 62 more, 76 about to be housed, 222 moving towards that. And of course, these are all the projects that we use, the utility assistance funds that I mentioned, from the Arizona Community Action Association. Now, as we've continued to work on reducing the unhoused population, we... Now, as we've continued to work on reducing the unhoused population, we remain very sensitive to neighborhoods and the concerns that are raised throughout the city. Multiple city departments in partnership with community-based outreach teams have developed procedures, and we are remediating homeless encampments quickly and effectively. It is time-consuming, but we're using compliance enforcement, human services strategies. The key to this work is the collaboration of all those puzzle pieces put together. We've engaged over 40 encampments, over 160 individuals, 50 have gone to emergency shelter, 25 to detox services, 10 are in case management with our case managers, and five have been housed from that process, in addition to the other numbers that I mentioned. I'd like to take a moment and just thank those partners. Commander Jeff Alexander and his team, particularly Jeff Howell, his Community Action Officer, who is many times in the leadership role of coordinating all of these services. You just heard Chris Hallett speak. He and his neighborhood specialists and inspectors have been awesome. Our own Human Services, FAC Director Libby Bissa and her team and her homeless team. And then we have our community providers, who is Community Bridges, Southeast Behavioral Health, Phoenix Rescue Mission. They all go out on these encampments. We all coordinate, go out together at one time so that we can really try to make a difference with these individuals. So, having said all of that, we all know that housing ends homelessness. There's no doubt about that. However, as we've traveled down this road together, truly together, each and every week, we've learned that our system is really in much, in many ways antiquated, fragmented, and even imbalanced. The targeted intensive efforts that I've described to you are bringing immediate need for overflow shelter, and it's beginning to permanently house individuals, as we've shown you, that have been utilizing the overflow shelter really as long-term housing, and that's not the answer. So this is the first step to revitalizing our system, and we have to keep working at it. Without comprehensive system change, we're not going to be able to, we're going to continue to have a high number of homeless individuals living on the street, using the shelter services for long periods of time and not getting out of the system fast enough. So we continue, as a Funders Collaborative, to concentrate on key strategies that are critical to establishing a coordinated system of care. The coordinated entry and housing placement and bringing that up fully and totally is critical to this. This is the way we're going to have the data. This is the way we're going to get the people to the right strategy. We're working closely with the Continuum of Care Board, who is now looking at funding, the funding possibilities for this to bring it up fully and completely at the Human Services Campus. With this information, what we've got to do is we've got to right-size all of our different strategies. As an example, we may need to reduce the number of traditional emergency shelter beds in the region to reallocate resources for permanent housing is just one example, but we've got to have the data and we've got to make sure that we're making the right decision at the right time and not move too quickly and then find out that we put the wrong, the wrong strategy in place. We're also looking very closely at different models of emergency shelter, which may better serve the needs of this highly acute, service-resistant population that we're finding down at the campus. The key components of these kinds of models are low demand or low barrier, the first step. That means that there's a high degree of responsibility on the provider to really engage those individuals and really get them stabilized so that they can start to see that we can make a difference. And so we're working at, looking at all of those kinds of things. With the data that we have generated through all the, everything that we've been able to gather to date suggests that we don't have enough of that kind of low-demand shelter or permanent supportive housing. Those are the kinds of things that we are working on to see how we can reallocate, redistribute the resources that we do have to make a difference. And finally, all of this change is having us look at the Human Services Campus as a whole and the governance structure at the campus. We are working to facilitate discussions amongst all the partners there. We have met individually with each partner, trying to understand their system, understand where they are, understand their view of the history of the campus. Our next step is to meet together with all of them to start working on creating a structure that is more collaborative, more efficient, more responsive, so that we can continue to work with the individuals that will continually be drawn to the Human Services Campus, excuse me. But through all of this, we all know that, and we can't take our eye off the real, real goal, and that's that we have to house people. No matter how temporary or how much other resource or other strategies we use, the bottom line is, they've got to get into housing. That's the only thing that truly ends homelessness. So I've moved very quickly through a lot of information. The partners are here to, and myself, to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you for that report and for everyone collaborating together across government jurisdictions. We have two cards. I'm going to go ahead and take those first, if it's okay with my colleagues. We have Mike Beleki followed by Craig Trippin, an alum of this body. So Mike, if you want to start.
I'll pass. I'll leave.
The microphones of the people who are watching online can hear what you have to say.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to just spend a couple of minutes giving you some kind of viewpoint from CAS. We agree with almost the totality of what the collaborators, funders, have said, and we've met with them. We've given them a position paper on the future. I think there's a couple of things you have to keep in mind. The situation that's being addressed is a dynamic one. It's going to change. It always has. It's come and gone with economic cycles, in terms of numbers of clients and patients. It's changed in terms of the character of the people on the streets. Housing is critical, but from our standpoint at CAS, so is, what's been stressed here is supportive housing. What you mean by that is, everybody coming into the campus area down there, there's levels of gradients of challenges, dysfunctions, both big and small, so that they're not, there's no one-size-fits-all. Keep in mind, when somebody comes to CAS, they're making a choice to walk into a place with rules. They're making a choice to walk into a place that's going to try to get them to move on to self-sufficiency. People that were in the low-demand shelter were not making that choice. Keep in mind, too, the dynamism of the situation. We get about 160 unrepeated guests into CAS a month. We believe in rapid rehousing but know that it's sort of cumbersome, slow, and not necessarily inexpensive. So that when we're doing 15 a month ourselves in terms of rapid rehousing, those are people that are in good position to do, deal with that. I bring the complexity up because I started with CAS in 1984. I'm still on the Board of Directors and the President right now, and I went to thousands of calls on homeless people when I worked in Station One my entire career. And you got a feeling, I'd ask, I'd ask people on the street, say, "Well, why don't you go down to CAS?" And they'd say, "Oh, there's too many rules." So this population is a complex one. Also, there's something going on in various cities in the West here that should not go unnoticed. And I don't want to be inflammatory, but when LA, Portland, Hawaii declare a homeless crisis, where the populations have gone up for various reasons, you got to be looking out maybe a little bit about where this is going with what is truly a changing economy, an opportunity for, you know, decent earnings at the bottom end of an economy, and whether that's the primary issue or the lack of housing. This is not a simple thing. And so as, you know, this MOS was a nasty, dirty little place, but it was a functional place for people to feel safe. People forget why it was there, and it's because we lost several dozen people in the heat and the sun when I was working in Mayor Gordon's office. So as we go through this, these funders have been instrumental in bringing community focus in what has been a difficult and sort of very difficult-to-solve problem. Just ain't easy, and I think that realism has to be put on the table. The other thing is, is that, you know, I've met with Mike McQuaid. There's been stress on the campus organizationally, not at a worker level. The agency worker to agency worker, that's been pretty functional. There's good lines of demarcations between who does what, but there's different visions of the campus or what's most important to put on the campus. Right now, you've got a big population on the campus that wasn't designed for. That's, we've got to figure out that one. But I think Mr. McQuaid would agree to me when I say that between all the different agencies that are separate and apart, and the campus services as a totality, we're a million to a million and a half short on a budget basis. In other words, this stress is still remaining in terms of the players on the campus. That's not just my estimate. It was Mike's, Mike when we talked. So the summation, I guess, is this, is CAS has got a lot of history in this issue. It was always our intent to put ourselves out of business, but I just don't see that literally happening anytime soon because this situation's going to change. And given what's going on in LA and other cities, Portland, in Hawaii, where they've declared emergencies, LA just announced a $100 million response to the homeless problem, which is spreading and which the homeless have become extremely mobile. I'm not saying that will happen here, but the same dynamics, we've just got to be cognizant of the fact that this is a tough, tough issue, and not everybody in the world cares. That's clear. I mean, the priority of issues of the general voter base, let's say, but this is one that can resurrect itself in a way that when we started, we had unorganized camps of up to 300 over at Carnegie Park and near the old St. Vincent de Paul Building and so forth. So we're here as an asset with some history, and we are going to work with our funders and the other entities on the campus. We are all dealing and groping with, and I just want to thank these guys again, because I tell you what, it's been a long, long time. We're the different parties at this table and others have come to the table and brought some focus to a very difficult problem. And so for that, I really want to appreciate, tell these guys I appreciate them. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I represent one of the two districts nearest to CAS, and so you mentioned that the campus now accommodates a lot more people than it was designed to, and so that's had a high impact on the neighbors. Any updates for the people who live near CAS on efforts to reduce the impact on the neighborhood?
You know, the neighborhood impact is difficult to calculate, and we do this, I had, there's one entity that does a point-in-time survey once a year about how many homeless and where they are. I've never actually believed any of that. It's just trying to keep, I think, whether it's getting better or worse, and I think it may be getting worse. Not everybody wants to, all the homeless folks, again, there are degrees of dysfunction, and others may just want to walk away from a big population for a variety of reasons. One of the issues CAS has made sure of in its, in its structure is to make sure that our guests are safe and our employees are safe. That's a top priority, and that's not necessarily always inexpensive, and it's got its own complexity. I don't know where it's going to go. I don't know where it's going to go, you know, we can try to rapidly house, but again, CAS is receiving...
The question was about the neighbors, so the people who find people sleeping on their lawns, human feces, that type of...
We've always had a neighborhood representative on the CAS board, and, you know, the size of CAS has been limited by agreements with the neighbor and the contract with the city. So we're 470 beds tonight, and they'll all be filled. So we're very cognizant of that. I don't know how far afield the population is going to go. If we're getting 160 new people choosing to come into CAS a month, you may have others coming into the area that are not choosing to go to CAS but come in the area for whatever reasons. So I don't know.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your longtime service to CAS and to the City of Phoenix.
Councilmember questions?
I believe Councilman Trippin said he wanted Councilman Beleki, or not Council, Mike Beleki to have his time. Was that correct?
I'll just say thank you. I've been to the campus multiple times, and I support everything that you're doing there. I appreciate the words, Mike. And for those who don't know, Mike Beleki is also a retired Phoenix firefighter, on top of all of the other things that he has contributed his time and efforts to for the City of Phoenix and the people of Phoenix. So thank you.
I happen to understand the rapid resources. I understand all sides of it in the sense of the summer. Many items were happening, or many things were happening within the district, and so I was able to work with the team in encampments. And so I understand the complexity of all of it and how, how the team comes out, goes together and works with those individuals in the encampments and trying to get them to resources and providing also food and water as we go through a transition of the encampments. And so I appreciate all that work that is being done because it is wraparound services. It does cost money, and it also takes a lot of time in mentoring, coaching, counseling individuals to seek services. So I'd like to thank all of, the whole team and everybody else that's on the, on the ground for appreciating for their work. They are very blessed in the sense that it takes a special person to be able to do that work and to be patient and understanding, and so I want to congratulate everybody and everybody in the field that does it. I just, I understand, and it is a complex issue, and it is, there's many different, I guess, dynamics that happens within an individual's life, and so it's, I'm glad that we're coming to or trying to come to some solutions to this complex situation and issue, but we do need to do more, but what that will require will be more funding and, and other ways of looking at how we adjust our funding in different areas of services. And so, just appreciate it. I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Some great news on the percent of folks staying in housing. That's an impressive success rate. That seems much higher than we normally see, so very exciting. And perhaps the wraparound partnerships and services are to attribute it to that, and I understand we're getting national recognition for working with mental health agencies across. So congratulations on that. That's very exciting. We have partnered, and thank you to Valley Sun for helping us on some of the partnerships with U-Mom and your support. I think we have good news coming up on veterans' housing that we're saving for another day, but maybe on women, particular, single women. Could you share an update with us on that?
So as the...
Did I pick the wrong person to ask? Whoever would like to give the update on...
Yeah.
Well, there's several things going on with U-Mom. One of the things that we were able to do with funding from the Valley of Sun United Way is to bring 25 more beds there, so we have a little bit more capacity. U-Mom is part of the Rapid Rehousing project that I described as well, and they have another partner that they brought on board to help with that. They are also, as you probably know, involved in numerous projects to try to expand, especially for single women, the ability to have a place where not only can the single women have an overnight, but also be able to stay there and access services during the day, which is not the case today. So there's numerous fronts. I'm not sure which one in particular you might be addressing, but yeah, there's several issues, and United Way is involved in most of them.
We've, I think, talked a lot about our progress on veterans homelessness, but I understand we're getting quite close on housing for women and having a bed available for women who desire...
Yes, and U-Mom is really in the forefront and all their partners, not just U-Mom, but U-Mom is at the heart of the matter with regards to the family hub. That is the coordinated entry system on the family side that is really, the example has been brought up to scale, and that's what we're trying to do on the single side. The volume is much greater, of course, many more different kinds of players, but there, we're really looking to them and what they've been able to do on that whole front. And of course, you know, families and then the single women is their expertise where they are taking that forward and rapidly trying to transition that over to the women. So you're absolutely right. Those are the, those are the next steps that they're taking.
I think, Madam Chairman, Councilmembers, I think the influence of both the funders coming together and being very provider-informed as we move this work forward, we have, we've changed, I mean, it was, we've changed the idea of getting to functional zero, which includes families. It includes women, it includes veterans, it includes individual adult men, and I think that's part of the movement of getting the funders together to be thinking about systems differently so that functionally we're moving with changes in the community to getting to zero.
And your purple tie reminds...
And your purple tie reminds me, we are painting Phoenix purple this month. Thank you for choosing that. And maybe someone could speak a little bit to the link between domestic violence and homelessness and the progress we are doing now across county, state, and city. Okay, no one has anything? We've covered that topic? Okay.
I'd like to comment a little bit on your neighborhood question. You know, it's been estimated that about 40% of the population in and around the Human Services Campus suffers from serious mental illness or some type of behavioral issues. And while I think CAS does a great job of providing shelter for potentially the 60% that can contend with metal detectors and the rules, which I think are doing a good job, we still have an unaddressed population. And we took a group of people up to Seattle to see a low-demand shelter called DESC a few months back, and it's a shelter for the type of situations that we're talking about that doesn't exist in Phoenix. So, while I don't know that that's something that people want to address, I think it's something that we're going to need to address. And one of my beliefs is that if we had the right type of shelter for the folks that do have mental illness, you know, the best way I can put it is, if there's, you know, if there's, if, because of my mental illness, I can't contend with rules and metal detectors, and I'm not going to go in there, then as a community, I think we have to say, how are we going to provide assistance for those people? And today, the message really is, if you can't deal with this, then we really don't have an option for you. And so, you know, I've talked to Eva Levos, and I know the folks in the neighborhoods, and I'm sensitive to their situations. And I've talked to Eva, and I've tried to use logic with her and say, you know, Eva, first I say, you know, tell me about how this is affecting your neighborhood. And so I listen, and then I say, "Well, Eva, you know, let's go at it this way. If you call the police, will they remove the homeless people from your neighborhood?" "No, they won't." Okay? And that's not a criticism of the police, it's just the situation. So I said, "Well, so you're against expanding shelter in the Human Services Campus area, but you're also not liking the fact that you have homeless people living in your neighborhood?" And I would suggest that if we had a place for the 40% that are suffering from serious mental illness, maybe we could attract some of those people out of the neighborhood. So I think an easy way to put it is if, you know, if there's no room at the inn, or it's not something that I can contend with, you know, then what are my alternatives? And today, the alternative is to sleep on the street or in the neighborhoods. The other thing that we're learning as we dig deeper and deeper into all of this is that, and I think CAS would be the first one to say, that some of the lengths of stay at CAS are longer than they would like, and in our conversations, we've discovered that CAS has three levels. You come in, you're Level 1, and you're Level 2, and you're Level 3. That a potential solution for expanding shelter beds by decreasing the length of stay in the shelter would be as you move into Level 3, which means that you potentially have a job or you're out looking for a job, that if we had another housing facility to move the people off of the campus, which at that point in time, it would be the right thing to do, because the other thing we don't want is, we don't want them, we don't want that to become their culture. So if we were able to create another type of recovery housing, so that as they move into Level 3, you move off of the campus and then into kind of a halfway house situation type of deal where, you know, you're working, you're getting a job, you're getting financially stable, and then on into housing, those are some of the things that I think we need to consider as a community that could dramatically affect the number of people in the neighborhoods today. And I would say, I've, you know, I've only been doing this for six years, but, you know, Jeff shared with me some photographs from, you know, eight to 10 years ago. There has been significant improvement in and around the campus, you know, and we can get you some of those photographs to help you with, but there has been really dramatic improvement around the neighborhoods. We're not done yet by any stretch of the imagination, but those are some ideas that we're working on that I wanted to make you aware of.
Wonderful, and thank you for talking to some representatives of the people I also represent. Appreciate that very much. I also really appreciate Mayor Stanton's effort to kind of engage other mayors in this solution. Not all of them have taken him up on his invitations to see what we're doing here in Phoenix, and I am hopeful that the solution will be regional in nature as well, so that other cities can step up. Any good news from other cities stepping up to help fight homelessness?
Well, I'm working with A New Leaf, which has the Men's Overmen's Shelter in Mesa. They have a similar situation there, where there's a percent of the homeless population in the East Valley that resists going into their shelter. Not surprisingly, the population that won't go into that shelter kind of hangs around St. Vincent de Paul over on Broadway, and A New Leaf has a piece of property with a warehouse and an office building on it right now that's right around the corner from St. Vincent de Paul. So I'm talking to them about creating a low-demand shelter there. We're working with Phoenix Rescue Mission. I know that's still in the city of Phoenix, but it's over on 35th Avenue in Kokopah. As you should know, they've just completed an expansion to their shelter that's significantly improved their operation, and we're working with them on developing some more facilities there to better serve the people.
Wonderful.
Madam Chair, if I could, we've also had, have had significant progress in emergency solution grant-funded entities, City of Glendale and others that have those kinds of funds, coming together and having joint conversations, collaborative conversations about creating their contracts similarly with a similar outcomes and similar metrics, and really bringing together the community resources for the first time. I've never seen funders across the region talk like that. We've had presentations to the city of Mesa on veteran homelessness, or taking many of the leads that we were able to craft here in the city of Phoenix. So, in answer to your question, I would say that across the board, for the, really, you can see it. Is it where we would like it to be? It never is. It needs to be deeper. The housing authorities are talking unlike they've ever done before. So I think there's, on numerous fronts, very real tangible evidence that it is becoming truly a regional issue. We're working on it together. But as we experience every week, it is difficult. It is grueling. Back to your point, Councilwoman Pastor, that it's complicated, it's complex, and it takes time. And so we continue to look for, keeping things stable while we look for the real, true, long-term answer. But I would say that you can rest assured that there truly is evidence of regional effort across many fronts.
Wonderful. And one thing that I do think is exciting, and we don't talk about, is Valley Sun is partnering with us to try to bring a grocery store into this general area, and I assume healthy food options are also part of success. And I would love to be able to say to the people who live near CAS, but there are good news that has come out of having all these services in your community, and they're, because they are very aware of the downsides, and so the more we can say there is good news associated, that would be helpful, too, if we can have those outcomes, because the residents of our central city are doing their fair part to fight homelessness, and we want to recognize that, that it is an impact from your neighborhood that others don't have. Well, thank you. It is so encouraging to have so many branches of government working together. We even got an update earlier today from the federal government, so we know that all hands are on deck. We still have a lot of work to do, but a lot to celebrate, so thank you for the update. We have no cards from the call to the public. Any additional agenda items? All right. With that, we are adjourned.